Not that I know of, but it's time to join you. That's what happened with that order.
Good evening.
And then the girl been asking my dogs to do the doors. What's her lunch or drinks on Sunday?
If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will convene the City Council and City Council is successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency. Sorry, Doug. I'm serious. So, I was convening the meeting. If you would all please rise for the invocation. We have Pastor Andy McCray of Azure Hill Seventh Day Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good and gracious Governor of our universe. Leaders and citizens of our city, Grand Terrace, are once more gathered in this council chamber to do their appointed work. We notice how agenda items are constantly linked to notions, goals, mission, vision. This good work, it is work for the common good. We notice how the agenda reflects the steady routines of the city's concerns. A careful attention is given to the safety of our children. How we take care of and pay for wasted recital, the ways we work together to waive fees and provide funding for youth programs, community events, and economic development. We are grateful for such a city, God. With such careful leaders and engaged citizens, continue to grant them courage and wisdom as they work together for an ever bright future in this good place, Grand Terrace. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Andy. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call please?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Present.
Mayor Protemroblez?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bill?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is a special presentation by the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. These are our quarterly statistics. Lieutenant O'Brien?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, good evening and thank you. On record, I am Art O'Brien, Lieutenant of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and I'll be spending about the statistics for the second quarter of 2015 as it became the Grand Terrace. Before I begin, I would like to point out that these statistics are about to present are only for Grand Terrace. They don't include any unincorporated areas of surrounding Grand Terrace or the county area of Riverside. This is purely for Grand Terrace. And I mention that just because there may be some speculation that because they're so close to high growth, some of their crimes may be reported. This is purely for Grand Terrace only. So, for the first part of this year, our Part 1 crimes, our Part 1 crimes are murder, manslaughter, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, simple assault, burglary, larceny, which includes people theft, and grand theft autos. Has only increased very slightly. I'm not sure what happened in the light side. Robbery is down by two cases. Grand theft auto is down by one case. However, burglary is up by 11 cases. Aggravated assault is up by four cases. Simple assault by three cases. And larceny is up by eight cases. The 11 cases of burglary may sound a little startling, however, that is a reporting error on our part. Some of those include thefts from open garages, from garage doors that have been left open, which truly don't meet the classification of a burglary. Part 2 crimes, anything other than what's on that list, have only increased by about 6 percent. And so the council can have a better understanding of what types of crimes are divided between Part 1 and 2 crimes. If you turn toward the back of the packet that I handed out, you'll notice a map, a series of maps actually. About the second map you come to will be labeled Part 1 Crimes at the top, and it'll be plotted with a series of locations as to where those crimes occurred. Behind that map is a list of what is actually constituted as a Part 1 crime. If you turn the page past those Part 1 crimes, you'll reach Part 2 crimes. It'll be a map of all of the locations in the city of Grand Terrace where those crimes have occurred. It should be in the back.
I have a Part 1 and I have a traffic.
There should be some more after that.
Oh, I found it. It's a couple pages back.
It should be about the third page.
Yeah, there's some description and then there's a map.
Yeah, so behind each of those maps, Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, there's some descriptions as to what is classified as a Part 1 and Part 2 crime. You get a little bit better of an understanding as to what types of crimes are classified as Part 2. But the easiest way to remember that is if it's not a Part 1 crime, it's reported as a Part 2 crime. On that Part 2 crime map, in the very bottom right corner, you'll see a small chart, and I understand it's very hard for you to read this, actually very hard for me to read even on a computer screen. But you'll see that second column there is kind of spiked, and that means that it's on Monday as to when the bulk of those crimes had been reported. And it's kind of interesting to note that is part of how we decide to assign our deployment. So Mondays seem to be the highest days. If you look at the same graph on the Part 1 map, it's pretty consistent throughout the week. All right, if we turn to calls for service in 2015, we had about 971 more calls for service than we did this time last year. Now, it's important to note that 7,038 number, and I'm going to actually just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, I'm going to refer to it when I go to the next slide, that's all calls for service. That means when these fine deputy sheriffs are initiating a traffic stop, they're talking with pedestrians on the side of the road, or they're checking the business in the middle of the night, it would be counted as to these calls for service. Now, remembering that 7,038 number, you're going to notice that in 2015, we had 2,511 reportable or dispatchable calls for service. Now, that's 2,511 calls out of that 7,000 number. These aren't additional calls. These are part of that 7,000 number. And these are calls where somebody calls our sheriff's dispatch and they request a response. And these are separated because these have a measured response on them. These are your 911 calls. These are your calls of citizens asking for a report, or they're asking for the deputy's help. Any point where a citizen would be asking for a deputy response would be classified as to these calls. So we had, excuse me, last year we had a 403 call increase, and I broke them down between the different priorities. And I'm going to give a little simulation here. Everybody's been to an emergency room in their life, correct? So, the best way to understand how we classify our calls or how we dispatch our calls out of, are as if you were to go into the emergency room. When you go into the emergency room, your triage, and you're put into a certain type of order, we do the same thing with our calls for service. When somebody calls in and requests deputy response, we find out the problem, and based on their information that they provide to us, we create the different priorities for them. Dispatching the most emergency ones first, or the lowest priority, a priority 4, we analyze. So of the 2,511 dispatchable calls for service this year, you can see that we had 10 emergency calls for service, 831 priority ones, 318 priority twos, 731 priority threes, and 621 priority fours. And for the most part, excluding emergency calls for service, those are increased from the same point last year. This is a similar chart that I've given in my prior presentations, and it still holds pretty true. Our highest rates or calls for service are between the hours of 1,300 and 1,600 hours. And again, that's something that we use to establish our deployment. It is very consistent with what I have presented in the past. So with these rise of call, our these Part 1 crimes or Part 2 crimes are on rise, you can expect that our deputy reports, our deputy actually going out taking reports are going to be increased as well. And they did so with about 51 reports at the same point in 2014. Part 1 crimes increased by 17 percent overall. It really makes sense that deputy reports increased as well. It is important to note as well that Part 1 crimes are on the rise throughout the entire end of the valley, by about 6 percent. Part 2 crimes are on the rise across the valley. And I say the valley from Chino Hills all the way out to the Kipo, by about, Part 2 crimes are increased by about 5 percent. So why are we getting some of these increased calls for service? Why are we getting these increased Part 1 crime reports? And why are we getting an increased deputy report? There are a number of factors that can go into that, but I think the bottom line is that people have become very dependent on picking up the phone and calling 911, calling the police to help solve their problems. And that is what we're here for. We're here to help citizens of Grand Terrace with the problems they may have. But I think society itself has kind of gotten out of the realm of talking to their neighbors. Instead of going next door, talking to their neighbor, they call the sheriff's department and expect a response from them. I will give you a great example. I was on my way to work this morning, and I heard Los Angeles Mayor Kurt Edding on a commercial. He was a small skit where he was with Steve Carell, and they were talking about their neighbors over wandering along twice a week as required by the city of Los Angeles. And Steve Carell immediately pops up and says, "Oh, call the police." And believe it or not, that's happened since. That is not a police problem, however. There is actually very little we can do other than go next door and talk to that neighbor, which is the same thing that that person could have done. So it's kind of fallen on the police department to help solve the community's problems. Another fine example, and I know the deputies who are here today to attest to this, is calls for service to a home because a juvenile just won't go to school. And they decide to call 911. We have to respond, and we go out there to assess the problem, and tell little Johnny that he needs to go to school, which is the same thing that his parents could have done. So these are just some of the reasons why some of these calls for service have increased. So the next series of slides are going to get a little technical, so I want to kind of break these down a little bit. And these are our response times. The slide before you is a comparison between 2014 and 2015 of emergency priority 1 calls. And just a quick explanation as to how our calls come in. Somebody picks up the phone and calls either our emergency or 911, or our non-emergency line. At that point, where the call taker takes down the information, creates that call, it sits in a computer and it clocking gets ticking. At the point where it is dispatched to the officer, the clock stops ticking, and that time is generally received dispatch. The point where call comes into dispatch, call is created to the point where the deputy is dispatched for that call. The underlying heading, the dispatched on scene, is the point where the dispatcher picks up that call, finds the available unit, and sends it to the deputy. And you'll notice that those times are actually fairly consistent, because the city of Grand Terrace, even all that large, doesn't take those very long to drive from point A to point B, when they receive a call. The important time to note here is the point where the call is received to the point where the call is dispatched. That would be more time, because that's the time where the call is actually holding and nothing has been done with it. And it could be holding for several different reasons. Serious crime or criminal crime is on the rise. Several different things, our investigative methods that our deputies go through, they have to locate a victim if it isn't always where they say they are. We have certain victim requirements that we have to provide by state law. We have to be able to provide them some victim advocacy, which takes time. We sometimes have to respond to a local emergency room, which isn't always that location. Take report, because that victim isn't necessarily in the city. They may be in a hospital, seen and treated. And lastly, trying to identify and locate a suspect. All this takes a lot of time. So while the deputy's going through all of these measures, that call, these other calls that have been rated at a lower priority are waiting for that deputy to clear. So you can understand why some of these times are a little high. In 2014, the receipt to dispatch time is seven minutes, but yet in this year, it's down to about 54 seconds. Received a dispatch for priority 1 calls in 2014 were about a little over five minutes and remain pretty much the same, only up about eight seconds in 2015. Now, our total on scene to clear time also is very similar. It's only increased by about 1 minute 46 seconds, and that's the time from where the deputy gets on scene to when he completes or clears that call. So on the next slide, I want to show you. This is a series of breakdowns between all of the different priorities of calls that we receive, from emergency call being the highest all the way down to priority 4 being the lowest. And really, the total time is the time where we need to really pay particular attention to. And on the far right column in yellow is the difference between those two annual times. Now, it's not to say that it is going to take a deputy six minutes and four seconds to get to your house if you call with an emergency call. That's not the same. In fact, this is kind of skewed, because the receive a dispatched time is an average, the dispatched on scene time is an average. So really, we're adding averages. And in some cases, we're adding averages of averages. Well, I hope that doesn't confuse you. We create this number because it is a tool to measure. We can show that, on average, in about six minutes and four seconds, the deputy responds from the point the call is received to the point where it's dispatched on scene. Now, it is important to note, and I know that some questions have come up as to what the average time is across the county. And again, that would be extremely hard to calculate, because we're dealing with averages of averages. So what is the state average of a response call? There is no state average. If you pick up your phone and you Google the average response time for law enforcement, it's actually going to come up with about an eight-minute response time, but that's not for law enforcement response. That is actually for advanced life support, which would mean our fire department, our paramedics, our ambulances, and somehow, law enforcement is impacted very well. So some of our call response times, once we get into the lower priority, you can see that they go up. It's the higher priority calls that we're most concerned about, and I feel that we're doing a very good job with those. The only time that really has increased are priority 2 calls between 2014 and 2015. And there's some of our agencies in the surrounding valley that literally have a four-hour response for emergency calls for service, and I won't that much shoot out on the. So our traffic collisions have increased by about eight, about a 32 percent increase. And I'll have you turn the page, and this kind of slots it out again. I understand it's kind of hard, that's why I attached it toward the back of your packet, as to where all of these traffic collisions are occurring. You'll notice that up there, you won't see 33 different dots. Some traffic accidents are occurring at the same place on multiple occasions, and we identify those parts and get that information out to our deputies for some of our traffic So lastly, I'd like to conclude before I open it up for any questions as to a case that we had, a very recent case, July of 2015, that happened with a couple, two to three different subjects walking into Get Loaded Firearms that had recently been opened here in town. They were trying to sell some antique firearms, some black powder ball ammo type firearms. Very odd, very unusual. The owner of the store heightened his alert enough to contact deputies. The deputy went out, did a fantastic job as to obtaining evidence, even though we had no crime yet, trying to understand exactly who this person was who was trying to sell these weapons, so that we could find out if they were stolen, if this was legitimate, to find out exactly what happened. We went so far as to dust for some fingerprints on the door, because we didn't know who these persons were. As a result, we were able to identify a subject. We located him in the Moreno Valley area, and we actually tied him to several different burglaries from San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. He and three others are behind bars as we speak, and this was just a great example of the fine work that our deputy sheriffs do for the citizens of Grand Terrace. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you very much. Does council have questions of staff? Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. I appreciate the production, but the response times and so on, and I think that's good. Obviously, I'm sure Councilman Hussey would echo that. But I wonder about the follow-up. One of the things that we find, and we get reports, because you guys furnish them to us, that we get a lot of the information about what's taking place, and I noticed that we basically have two types. We have transits that are easy to knock down for drugs, not easy, but they can get knocked down for drugs, and they're taken to CDC, or to your main office. And then we've got the type of situation where we have burglaries or people breaking in, and where the community really starts to get scared. And it's understandable. How can we be assured that we have some kind of follow-up on these? I'm not content with the idea of, well, we went there and we took a report and there was no action. Unfortunately, we don't know. At the current stage, we don't know what's happened after those things. And, you know, I could go take a report. I don't, you know, what I'm really looking for is the follow-up behind that. And I know part of that is surrounded with the fact that if we grab somebody that's on drugs, especially if they happen to be associated with this community, and now they're not going out there and trying to steal stuff from other people, that's good. But I don't know, I can't comb through that and determine what percentage there is of that. And I suspect there are more out there just going out there and robbing people and pawing through their stuff, and maybe drugs aren't the only reason why they're doing it. And so I'm just interested in making sure that this community has a feeling of semi-contemptment. I think you can see my point.
Certainly. And all of our crimes that involve, or cases that don't have suspect information, we like to encourage our deputies, and in some cases, we assign our deputies to follow up on those cases. Anything of a major case, any of our Part 1 crimes automatically go to the detective that's assigned to Grand Terrace. We follow up on all of those cases. Now, I think part of what you were saying is, you're right, we do make an arrest of somebody who might be on narcotics. We take them to jail. But unfortunately, once he leaves that jail, we really don't have anything else to follow up on. We would need something, we would need a new crime, something else to contact him with, unless they leave jail on probation or parole. And then we do have things to follow up on, and we actually do have a probation officer assigned to our station who can follow up with those persons following incarceration. I hope that answered your question.
Well, you've done the best you can at this point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Mitchell?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to add an additional comment. It is a true statement that once a report has been taken, an investigation needs to take place, occur, and there's a process to that. So oftentimes, when that's happening, a resident isn't visited back to share all the details of that investigation.
That is correct, yes. And I'm sure that happens more often than not. There are several things happening behind the scenes, and the only time the resident would be contacted, and more of a reason to maintain their confidentiality, they don't want to advertise to the rest of the community of what has happened to them. Some may be embarrassed, some may be fearful, and some may want that interaction. But there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that that reporting party or that victim won't know, and we won't contact them unless we need more information from
Councilmember Hussey?
Thanks, Lieutenant, for your report, but I'm with Mr. Wilson on the follow-up. Myself, I even made a phone call to dispatch and had a run-in. And yeah, it would've been nice to know what the follow-up was that for the incident that happened. You know, I think it was a pretty significant incident that should have been a citation, but you know, that's your guys' job. My law enforcement's different. But, you know, just a common courtesy, hey, you know, not just because I'm a councilman, just, you know, for any of our residents, you know, we took care of that issue, you know, it won't happen again. Because I had no problem confronting the people, but, you know, I know when my boundaries are, not to overstep my boundaries, and that's what, you know, we pay you guys, the sheriff's department. But yeah, and just, too, you know, I know one big thing is the social media, and there's a lot of talk on there. And a lot of times, people, you know, they use that for like to vent or just to get the word out, but some don't call dispatch. Another incident, when we had somebody knocking on our door, I don't know, 25 minutes, I think it took longer than 25 minutes when my wife was home, but, you know, the sheriff, he was actually on another call, because they were looking for a suspect, so I understand that. But, you know, a little bit of follow-up on, you know, just to drop by and see the resident, hey, we took care of this issue. And I know you guys are busy, you can't do it all the time, you know, because you guys are one deputy, I understand, but, you know, just, you know, it gives residents a feel of comfort, you know, like, hey, I wasn't wasting your time, you know, just, you know, want to, you know, make it aware, but I appreciate everything you guys, once again, what do for, as I understand your situations, and, you know, the residents really appreciate it, you know. There's a feel of comfort when we see you guys driving around, you know, they enjoy it well. But thank you for the report, and I just, like Mr. Wilson said, you know, follow-up on some of the stuff, just a common courtesy. But, you know, if time allows, I understand you guys are busy. Thank you.
Thank you for understanding that. You know, we're always striving to provide the best quality service possible. This is the first time I'm hearing of this, but it is something of an issue. I will bring it up at our briefings to see what we can do. However, I would find it very difficult, just for the pure fact of the manpower in the city.
Is there an opportunity to follow up if somebody had an email account, and they said, can you just send me an email and let me know? Much like the reports that we get, I think if I called the sheriff regarding an issue, I would like to know that at least something was done.
Sure, and you know, there's a very, let me address the first part of that first. We're really not set up for email. Law enforcement is traditionally technologically behind the curve, so we don't, we do have email, we do use email, but we don't use it to the best of our advantage. The other part to that, I forgot where I was going with this, I apologize.
It's okay.
What was the last part of your question again?
I was looking for an opportunity for a way for you to follow up without having to have more manpower.
Thank you. When anybody calls our dispatch center, whether it's by 911 or by our non-emergency line, the dispatcher will ask them if they would like contact by the deputy. The majority, and I wouldn't be unable to put a number on it, but I would say the overwhelming majority of those do not want contact by the deputy. And this is a verbal question asked by the dispatcher to the person calling 911 or the non-emergency line. And if the answer is no, the deputy is more than likely not going to contact that person.
Clearly not. Well, that-
Well, that's good to know, at least people are asked upfront. I have two other questions. When we talk about having the cuts in manpower that we've had in this city, and there's the discussion about response time, and there is the desire to have a pretty quick response time, and I'm wondering, if we added one more patrol deputy, do you have any idea what effect that would have on the response time? And then I have two more follow-up questions once you're done with that.
Sure. I can't say exactly what would happen as far as our response times if we got a second officer. But I will say that our response times, and one of the reasons you see some low response times in there, is because we do have a second deputy working 40 hours during the work week. And when that second deputy is working, he is able to work with the deputy already assigned to that area, to Grand Terrace. And between the two of them, they're able to lower those calls for service, those response times to calls for service. So yes, it will lower response times. How much lower, I don't know. It will also increase the amount of proactivity in our city.
And so maybe that leads into the second one. How would that correlate to lower crime in the city?
Well, I can't, again, I can't say that it will lower crime, but it will definitely take some of the persons who need to be contacted, who we just quite don't have the time to contact, we make contact with them, make sure that they aren't doing nefarious activity in the city of Grand Terrace.
Now, there's a resource officer that has started with the high school this term, is that true? And what effect do you think that will have?
There is a school resource officer that is currently being paid for by the Colton Joint Unified School District, assigned to the high school. The school district is paid for one to cover the Grand Terrace schools, not necessarily just the high school, but the Grand Terrace schools. And they are also paying for another one in Bloomington High School, which will cover schools on the west end of the valley. Traditionally, in past, we haven't had a lot of calls for service from the high school, but we do get impacted with those calls. So that deputy there now will be assigned to handle anything that happens at the high school during school hours, not necessarily after hours, as well as some of the surrounding schools within Grand Terrace.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson, did you have another question?
Thank you. This is a little bit off the shelf, but I think it applies. We are in the process of working with Caltrans to change the intersection at the Barton Road to Freeway 100. And that kind of brought into question something, and I plan to explore it in other directions. But at any point, this body revised the traffic, the speed limit on Barton Road upwards. In your opinion, given the data that we've received in relation to the traffic collisions and things that have happened, and if you had the opportunity to take a look at what this ultimate freeway situation's going to look like after they get finished in a couple of years, in your opinion, would it be better if we dropped the speed limit down five miles an hour? I'm not saying that they would, but I'm just saying I wonder if it would create a better condition.
Yeah, I understand, and I think what you're saying makes perfect sense. However, I am not a traffic engineer. And unfortunately, speed limits are created by traffic engineers. And the speed survey, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to, those are conducted by traffic engineers who have went to school and received training and education in establishing those speed ranges.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hussey.
Just one quick comment. I just want to thank the deputies also that are here tonight. Bureau of Patrol, what you're doing for our city, I really appreciate it, and thank you for putting your life on the line for our city and our residents.
Thank you for that lead-in. I was going to ask if you would please introduce the officers that are here with you tonight.
Absolutely. I'll start on the far end. We have Deputy Henry Reyes. We have Deputy Ryan Cook. And we have Corporal or Detective Brian Chambers, who is currently acting as one of our watch commanders for the area. And of course, I think you all know Captain Dorsey.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you for keeping our community as safe as it can be. Thank you, Lieutenant O'Brien, for your report. I appreciate that.
Mayor, if I just might just add just one-
Mr. City Manager.
One point of clarification, I want to lament on this just for a second. As part of Lieutenant O'Brien's comments, he did mention that there is a second officer in town for 40 hours per week. And I know that from my conversations with Coffee with a Cop this morning, I learned some things, that some crimes require two men to respond. So in the cases where we have only one person on duty at certain points in time, they have to wait for someone to come from somewhere else. So obviously, that must impact our overall averages. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that we do have that extra 40-hour person here. So that's helping out some. So we constantly hear that there's only one person, one officer at a time in the city, but we have some additional resources. And I will be working with Captain Dorsey and his force to bring back some recommendations to the council for increased services in the future.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Following a consent calendar, items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any items for removal? Okay, I would like to remove the minutes from special meeting July 21st. And if there's a motion for a balance, that would be great.
I move for the adoption of the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protemroblis voted aye. Mayor McNabbel voted aye.
Okay. Thank you. On the minutes of July 21st, packet page 25, in my comments, we were having a discussion with Mr. Foster from HDL, and I was referring to the area, let's say, under item number three, fourth paragraph from the bottom, I talked about pulling people, and what I said was pulling people from the south, Riverside. And I referred to High Grove and not Highland.
The addition of the comma and the correction was made.
Okay, thank you. So I would move to approve the minutes with these corrections.
A second.
Motion and second, please vote.
There's one vote missing. Can you please revote? Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protemroblis voted aye. Mayor McNabbel voted aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll open public comment at this time. It's an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. I may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comments, or may request a matter be agendized for further meeting. I don't have any request-to-speak forms in front of me. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. And I will move on to City Council Communications. We will start with Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Not really that much. I attended a community law enforcement event that night at Richard Rawlins Park. It was very interesting. I know when I was there, it was probably towards the last part, I don't know how many people were there prior to the residents, but I talked to a lot of residents who had their, unfortunately, their kids were going to schools overnight for them, and they really wanted to make it in football practice. But their interest was, you know, when you guys are going to have your next one, and if they could do it at the schools, that'd be great. They just wanted me to pass on that comment. And I guess my family had Coffee with a Cop. I was actually at work, but they said how they really enjoyed it and really appreciate the time that the officers put out for them and stuff. It was really a good event. I also attended a fundraising event for the Colton, oh, not Colton, I'm sorry, I'm still using my son's name, Colton, Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters. So the kickoff's coming around, I think, August 28th. So it was a really good event that they helped raise money. You know, my wife and we were on the boosters, so all that fundraising is for a lot of the kids who can't afford the cleats and to make sure that the team gets fed. And it's a really good event. I'm looking for the kickoff, and not only for the football team, but for RLTC, the marching band, the cheerleaders. So it's a really good community event. And one other thing that piqued my interest was the radio station. I know we talked about it a lot, so I decided to turn on 1640. I actually found it pretty quite informing, and I liked it. It was pretty neat. I was just wondering if we could do something like the mayor's monthly talk or something. I have no idea, I'm not a radio person, but I just thought it was a good hometown feeling on that radio station. And they also mentioned Coffee with a Cop. Of course, they couldn't explain where the business was at, so they said it was at the Golden Arches, so I think we all know where it was at. And that's about it. And I just, thank you again, residents, for coming out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item. I'd really like to convey my gratitude to all those dedicated parents and friends that maintain these sports programs for the children. I see this through my granddaughter, who is now in San Diego, and she is close to that driving age, and yet she has, I guess the effort did not go to waste because she was able to participate in the programs here. She's carried that energy to where she is now. She was just put on the junior varsity tennis team, and she's also working her way through a soccer situation. So that effort is so important in these kids' lives. I really, really would like to convey the appreciation for the effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Mitchell?
That's okay, you can call me whatever you want, I'll still answer. I had an opportunity to speak with Captain Dorsey this morning, Lieutenant O'Brien, at the Coffee with a Cop event. I just want to, again, publicly say how much I appreciate you selecting Grand Terrace for the location of the National Night Out. And I look forward to it growing. I hope that you look at Grand Terrace next year as the city to host it. And then thank you to all the deputies and other enforcement that came out this morning for Coffee with a Cop. I thought it's a great event, much smaller than in the past, but I think it reached some new folks that we hadn't reached in the past. And thank you to our deputies for keeping our community safe and putting your life on the line as well. I think I can speak that for all of our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
I don't have much, but so I will fill it up with some other things that I've been wanting to mention. First of all, I want to thank our sheriff's support team. We truly appreciate it and the reports you've been providing. We've had some great discussions. I was pleased to hear the mayor talk about, and our city manager about, as we get better financial data, looking at what we can do to better support your efforts in our community. I also want to say, as far as City Council boards that I belong to, I attended the AMETRANS Planning Committee that we meet on a quarterly basis. And it was quite interesting when you have areas, which Grand Terrace is one of those that you go into other jurisdictions. And we had a case where a woman had to travel by public transit using the Axis van to get to work each day, and there was a gap. But unfortunately, because of grant rules, we were unable to provide that final mile. But it was quite an interesting process. One of the really fun things that happened to Grand Terrace was the opening of the beer room. And I attended, and I visited with our chamber executive and with our mayor, and they really did a fantastic job. The demand was huge. The entire parking lot was full, and they did an excellent job on that. And it's just a great indicator of what kinds of demand that we have for economic growth in this community. The other thing is, I had been going to Redlands to get my hair done, and I thought, well, that's really wrong of me to do. And there's two new salons that have opened up. One is the Hair Lounge, and I had been going there for about six times, and they do an excellent job. And they're right next to the, well, excuse me, right next to the Professional Nail. The other one is Unique Hair and Nail, and I've also been going there. And again, two nice, good establishments that do an excellent job, and for about 50% of which you pay for Redlands, it's supporting businesses in Redlands. So I told them I'd give a shout-out for them. One final thing is, I had a discussion with my city manager on our bi-weekly meeting. One of the good things as City Council person is when you use our own services, you can see what kind of services we have. And I was invited to a baby shower that was at the Richard Rawlins Park, and soccer had had their opening ceremonies. And I was very embarrassed and confused because we had authorized some additional staffing. The bathrooms were horrible condition, and all the trash receptacles were full. The young lady had to bring her own trash bags because there's no way she could put trash in the existing receptacles. But I just want to say to the community, we're on the web, we have our emails. If there's anything in the community that you feel needs some attention, please let us know, because the opportunities for me to be at that park in that instance was just a coincidence. And we'd certainly like to have some feedback from you, and we'd be happy to get that input and talk to our city manager about that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I have a couple items. I'll start with the National Night Out Tuesday, August 4th, and just say I really appreciate the participation of all of our public safety organizations who were there and who organized it. It's great to see not only our sheriff, but Citizen Patrol, CHP, Search and Rescue, and even employees of Target were there with some activities for the children. It was a really nice, really nice event. The second, the city manager and I met with our assembly member, Cheryl Brown, and her staff to discuss AB 113, which is a bill that is looking at redevelopment and trying to clean up some of the issues that have happened with the redevelopment dissolution. The provisions that are in this particular bill may allow the city of Grand Terrace to use bond proceeds. The ones that we sold during the time when it was clear that redevelopment was most likely going to be dissolved, but there might have been an opportunity for it to continue. And we sold bonds in June of 2011, and we've been procluded from using the proceeds from those. So we had an opportunity to sit down with the assembly member and her staff and let them know what our situation was and the projects that we had looked at using this money for. We'll be following up with them, at least our city staff will, with some more documentation to see if there is something that we can do. They didn't make any promises, but they didn't say no. And I came away from it feeling like there was perhaps an opportunity, that something could happen. So it was a very good meeting, and I appreciate the assembly member for, again, being concerned with what she can do to help our community. My third item is a recognition of an employee, longtime employee, for the Grand Terrace Healthcare Center. I was invited to a celebration to honor this woman, Nadia Welcher. She has been recognized by a magazine called Provider, which I am told is like the Sports Illustrated for the long-term healthcare industry. She was named one of the 20 to watch for this year, which in their industry is a huge honor. So they put together a nice little celebration for her, and they invited me to come and be there on behalf of the city. The Chamber of Commerce was there to congratulate her as well. It's interesting for me to note that as much as I don't see a lot of the people from Grand Terrace Healthcare Center, I know they employ a lot of people. And they come to this community, and the visitors for their- to this community, and the visitors for their patients come to this community. They, as an individual healthcare provider themselves, have been honored with industry awards, and so the fact that they have this young woman who is being recognized with such a high honor just really goes to show the quality of care that they are delivering there. And on a separate note, they anticipate having the parking lot that they are constructing next door completed by mid-September. So I know their neighbors will be happy to hear that. And then lastly, our city manager's been working on scheduling a couple of days for the council to have a vision workshop to update our 2030 vision. That would allow this particular council to revisit the vision that was written down and to update it, maybe look at some different perspectives, maybe some, a little bit of change in priorities. And I was wondering, as I was listening to discussions of residents and my colleagues about public safety and about response times and about concern of the increase in certain kinds of crime, if we can make sure that part of our workshop discussion involves the council looking at, how do we, how do we look at having a safer community? What does that mean? Is that, is that more patrol deputies? Is that another, another way to focus on policing in the community? Not to say too much, just to say I hope we can have a discussion that has to do with that. And that will conclude my report. We will move on to item E, which is public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. To speak on public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak for and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or somebody else raised at the public hearing, described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So we will conduct the public hearing in the following format. It will be opened. We will discuss any written communication. City council will have questions of staff. If there's an applicant involved in this, they will have time for comments. They are not limited to three minutes. If there are discussions in favor or those opposed to the item, they will come after that, and they will be limited to three minutes apiece. If there is opposition to the issue, the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. Public hearing will be closed, and then we will come back for council deliberation. So at this time, I am opening the public hearing to the adoption of residential and commercial solid waste and recycling rate increases. Maybe we have a staff report, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. For the record, my name is Adrienne Freeman, Management Analyst. This is item eight of the agenda, as has been mentioned. This staff report supports 2030 Vision Goal Number One, to ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. On June 23rd, 2015, the city council adopted a resolution to set a public hearing for today's date, August 11th, 2015, relating to refuse rate adjustments. Burttec Waste Industries worked with the city staff to issue notices, including current and proposed rates, to all property owners within the city, and those notices were mailed out on June 26th of 2015. As a brief overview, residential rates for the 96-gallon bins will increase from $22.86 to $23.85. And the 64-gallon bins will increase from $21.52 to $22.56. These services are the primary services for residential customers within the city. Commercial rates will increase by approximately 13% overall. To date, three written protest notices have been received by the city. The third notice was actually received today by the Community Development Department, and we did give that to the city clerk for your review on this evening. Under Proposition 218 procedures, written protests require a majority of property owners to protest the fee changes. Otherwise, implementation of the proposed fees may proceed. In one of the protest letters that staff received, it was noted that our city rates are increasing higher than other city rates. And so we did request a rate survey. We worked with Burttec Waste. That was done, actually, on this week. And so what we saw is a comparison of Grand Terrace and Highland, Rialto, Fontana, San Bernardino, and Redlands. Those are all near our proximity. What you'll find is that the rates are comparable to our own, keeping in consideration that some of the cities, such as Highland and Fontana, will also be facing rate adjustments come October of this year. They will have rate adjustments, and some municipalities actually have their own city employees to provide hauling services. So at this time, staff is recommending that city council conduct a public hearing to hear appeals of the proposed rate adjustments. After the public hearing, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution setting forth new solid waste and recycle waste adjustments. Should council have any questions, staff and Burttec Vice President Mike Aragorn, who is here on tonight, would be more than willing to answer any questions that you have.
Does council have any questions of staff? I, I mean, see, no questions. Did Burttec representative want to come forward and say anything?
Excuse me, I've got a bit of a bad knee tonight. Mike Aragorn with Burttec Waste Industries. No particular comments, but if there are any questions of our company, we, as in your previous information that you've received, we've been able to stabilize and absorb some rate increases over the past few years, but unfortunately, with rising costs, we've been positioned now to pass on these rates. However, as staff has indicated, they are still very competitive rates for the surrounding areas. So we appreciate the business here in the City of Grand Terrace and open it up to the council if any questions of our company.
Okay. Any questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Seeing none, thank you very much. All right, at this time, I will ask if there are any comments in favor or opposition of Please state your name for the record.
Jeffrey McConnell, Walden Avenue. The beginning of the slideshow, it says that it fits in with the 2030 vision. It's a request, actually, from the council to explain specifically how it benefits in cost recovery.
Is that your question you would like to know?
Request, yeah, I'd like to know that.
Okay.
How it fits in, in the cost recovery specifically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing done, I will close that, and I will ask if staff would address the concern that was raised.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The question is, how does this affect rate recovery? Very simply, this is a cost of a service given to, directly to our residents and our commercial customers. If it's not recovered through the end user, it is a cost that the city would have to bear. And so our vision is where we can to achieve cost recovery through the benefiting party.
Okay. So if I'm understanding what you're saying is, our rates are going up, and whether it comes out of the City General Fund or it's passed along to the residents, is what we're looking at here?
Correct.
Okay. All right. With that, our public hea, oh, Mr. City Attorney.
I meant to make the comment after you closed the public hearing.
All right.
Sorry.
All right, I will close public hearing, and then I will come back to our city attorney.
It's important to put on the record, because this is a majority protest, Prop 218 process, if staff could put on the record how many protests were received, and if that's less than the majority.
Staff received three written protests, and that is not a majority.
Okay. So we will come back to council for deliberations and a motion. Any motions on this item?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015, setting forth new solid waste and recycle rate adjustments.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the council? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hossi, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye. Okay, thank you. Move on to item F, which is unfinished business. We have item nine, which is consideration of repealing Municipal Code, Chapter 15.36, and repeal and replace Municipal Code, Chapter 15.24, relating to permitting procedures for small residential rooftop solar energy systems. And this is our second reading, so we will not have a staff report, but I will open it up to questions if council has questions of staff. Seeing none, and we will ask for a motion and read by title.
I move the recommendation, an ordinance to repeal Municipal Code, Chapter 15.36, solar water heating systems in its entirety. Repeal Municipal Code, Chapter 15.22, Uniform Solar Energy Code in its entirety, and adopt a new Chapter 1524, Small Residential Rooftop Solar Energy System permits.
I will second with a note that that first 15 is a 24, not a 22. I'll second the motion.
Are you saying that, when you were, when you were speaking, you said 22? So you'll amend your, you'll amend your motion to reflect that it was 24?
I'll amend it to two instances where there's 1524.
Okay, thank you very much. So there's been a motion and a second. Please vote.
Protem Mayor, thank you for reading all of that as well. That's a lot to read.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hossi, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye. Okay, thank you. Onto new business. Item number 10 is a consideration of Southern California Edison's Street Light Acquisition Program. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Sandra Molina. I am your Community Development Director. As you've indicated, this is a report to consider Southern California Edison's Street Light Acquisition Program. To give the council a little bit of background, Edison has a program called LS-1 Street Light Acquisition Program, and this program is closing on August 15, 2015. This program allows cities to purchase the existing streetlight system, and in doing that, acquiring and purchasing the lighting system, the cities also, by virtue of acquiring the infrastructure, assume all maintenance and operation responsibilities, including utility bills, because the lighting source still has to be paid for, replacement and repair to light bulbs, electrical components, the lighting post, the light housing, and also the liability that comes with having infrastructure. And as indicated in the staff report, our annual electrical bills average about $65,000 a year, and that would be utility lighting and maintenance. So in this program, if the city is interested in pursuing the acquisition of the streetlights, a $10,000 deposit is paid to Southern California Edison just to get into the queue of about four to six months. And by getting into that queue and paying that $10,000 deposit, we're telling Edison, we're interested, and at some point, they will appraise the streetlights within the city, assign a purchase price value, and if the city moves forward, that would be the potential purchase price. At any time prior to the actual valuation taking place by Edison, a city can withdraw their proposal and get their refund. This is just a few photographs showing our, some of our existing streetlight system. This obviously is on Barton Road, and here's other, just photographs of streetlights, and this one on the right here is off of De Berry Street. And these are actual posts, but some of our lighting systems are telephone poles with lights on them, so they come in various degrees of infrastructure improvements. So the discussion is, if the city were so, if the council were so inclined to pursue this, the first step after the $10,000 deposit, and once the valuation is done by Edison, is the city would wanna also have some independent consultation as far as that, if that's a correct and true valuation, then we would also wanna know about the cost benefit of pursuing that program. And then there's a, there's a need to determine the funding source to offset the maintenance operation and liability cost. So those would, those next steps are what staff anticipate. There could be more, but if we were to move forward, that's, that's at least the first few steps. We're asking this question to the council because it is a program by Edison that is coming to a close, but in staff's professional estimation, we do not advise that the city move forward at this time with the lighting acquisition, because we just don't have, we're just not in a position to be able to take on that responsibility. But in, in preparing our research and preparing for this staff report, what kinda comes up is, you know, this, this third bullet after identify potential funding sources to offset maintenance, it brings to mind the bigger question in that there are infrastructure, there's infrastructure within the city that benefits certain properties, and in many instances, the city is bearing that or paying that cost of benefit. For instance, there are, you know, a few months back, we talked about the lighting and landscape maintenance assessment district. There are three small areas within the city that are currently paying for their lighting cost. We have other properties in the city that are served by lighting and infrastructure, streetlights, and they do not pay an assessment towards that ongoing cost. But yet they are getting more service than those residents or property owners within the city that don't have any streetlights. And so it is a bigger question. And as the council knows from those previous discussions we had, state law does allow a jurisdiction to create an assessment district, and we do have an assessments district currently. And I provided in the, in the slide that the different improvements that can be considered as far as the planting, block walls, streetlights, curb, gutter sidewalks, those are legitimate type of improvements. Then also, the assessment district would cover the maintenance of those infrastructure items, and then there's also expenses that could be covered under the assessment district. And so, as I've indicated, there are three small areas that are currently in an assessment district. But it is standard practice for most cities to, as an automatic requirement of new development, require the assessment, excuse me, require the property to be annexed into the existing assessment district, either for lighting, landscaping, block walls, what have you. So we don't have a standard policy or ordinance in place, but as a practice, we do have the ability and the authority to require it of new development, and so we are starting to do that. But really, what staff thinks is appropriate is for the council to direct us to come forward or come back with a policy or an ordinance that's very clear for developers and for staff, that all new development would be required to annex into a lighting and landscape assessment district, and that that assessment obviously would pay for the infrastructure, the maintenance, and the operation. And so although the staff report included four recommendations in the beginning of the agenda, we don't advise one through three, but we do request that the council direct us to do number four, which is create a policy. And I will conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Director Molina, are there any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment, if there's anyone that has a comment on this item. No one is moving, so I will close public comment and bring it back to council for a
I move adoption of number four, direct staff to return with a policy to require all new developments have lighting and landscaping districts for streetlights. The policy shall require light poles to use LED lights and assessments to cover require light poles to use LED lights and assessments to cover annual costs for electricity, which includes power and ongoing maintenance.
I will second, but I will ask for clarification. For one, two, and three, there's no action needed on those, right? Other than we're not moving forward with them?
Yes.
That is correct. Okay, I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for item number four. Is there any discussion from council? Oh, no. Okay, so a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Council members Hossi, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem, Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. We'll move to item 11, adopting Resolution 2015, rescinding Resolution 1987-26 in its entirety and making a finding that all funds were distributed for benefit of the participants. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor. G. Harold Duffy, for the record, your city manager. This is basically a cleanup item where we are, as the title says, that all funds were expended. The resolution moved over to Cal-Pur system, and there were no benefactors of the existing fund, and there's no funds within the old retirement system.
Any questions of staff? Oh, okay. I have no request to speak, and it doesn't look like anyone's coming forward, so I will close, open and close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion. And I'm actually going to motion staff approval on this one.
And I will second.
Right, motion and second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Council members Hossi, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem, Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. Item 12, a word of contract to Apple Valley Communications for installation of data cabling in City Hall. May we have a staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council member Cynthia Fortune with the Finance Department. Before you is a staff report regarding data cabling installation in City Hall. This staff report supports 2030 Vision Goal Number One, to ensure our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. And Goal Number Four, develop and implement successful partnerships by working collaboratively with other public sector agencies, in this case, the City of Loma Linda, to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors, and our community. As part of our information technology support agreement with the City of Loma Linda, their team comes and analyzes all our information technology infrastructure. During the course of their routine work, they have discovered that a data cabling in City Hall is old and outdated. So what we're showing you is our current server room and our rack, and this is a room across from City Hall. And so, see, all the cables in the city's equipment room are not properly labeled, resulting in significant staff time in determining whether, which cable runs to a particular phone or PC. Several cables were in detrimental condition, were not working at all, or not to code. Instead of cables that should be rant tactically to each workstation, mini switches, hubs, and other routers were discovered in the ceiling and the cupboards under desks that were significantly reducing the performance in the network. And several rooms in City Hall were actually not wired at all when we were migrating from the old phone system to the new phone system, specifically the mayor's office and the council member's office. So what the IT Loma Linda had to do was come up with a Band-Aid, so to speak, to get those phones working in those rooms. So it is a temporary fix, and the installation of this cabling should do that. So we solicited bids to do said cabling in City Hall, and we actually received three bids, as attached in the staff report. One from Apple Valley Communications, CDWG, and from HHS Construction. A thorough review of all the bids by our IT Loma Linda staff determined that although CDWG was our lowest bidder, they did not meet several requirements. So when we first submit, when we first received their bid, we sent them an email, we contacted them, and told them that they didn't meet the specs. If they would like to resubmit their bid, they said they would. They submitted a second bid, which still did not meet the specs. We sent them again a second email stating, you still did not meet these requirements. We gave them a third opportunity to send us a bid, and I requested that they respond within two to three weeks. I did not receive anything, so then we sent a fourth email say, to the company saying, since we did not hear from you, we will assume that the last bid you submitted was your final bid, and informed them that it still did not meet the requirements. So based on all the quotes received, staff is recommending that city council approve the purchase and installation of data cabling in City Hall to Apple Valley Communications, the lowest responsible bidder, and allow for a 20% contingency as follows. So it's total of 33,774, but at this time, the purchase order will only be for the 28,145. And again, once approved, a purchase order will be issued to the vendor. And in the fiscal impact section, this funding was actually approved in fiscal year 2014-15, and we are now in 15-16. So when we come back to request the carryover of unused appropriation in the prior year, funding for this will be part of that.
Okay, so this has already been appropriated, it just has not been used?
Yes.
Okay, and it wasn't part of balancing the current budget?
No.
Thank you.
So what we have also attached in the staff report to show you, this is what our current server room looks like. Once the data cabling would be installed, they will actually make it look all organized and clean and neat, giving our IT staff the ability to look for which cabling runs where. And currently in City Hall, these are our wall mounts and raceways, and they will be fixed to look organized and closed and covered. These are other parts of City Hall that show other wall mounts and raceways, and it is the intent, again, to have them fixed and be clean and neat. And these are Ethernet wall jacks that also need to be cleaned up, whether they are run through the ceiling or on the floor. And this is what they should look like. And I think we just added other photos of our unstructured cabling that will definitely be organized. And that concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions. Our representative from IT Loma Linda is also here, should anyone have more technical questions that I am unable to answer.
Thank you very much. I love the pictures. Does council have any questions for staff?
Yeah, that was courtesy of IT Loma Linda.
Okay, hearing no questions, I will open up for public comment. I have no request to speak, and nobody is moving, so I will close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion and discussion.
If there's no discussion, I'll move for a motion to award the purchase and installation of data cabling in Gran Terrace City Hall to Apple Valley Communications, and authorize the city manager to execute the purchase order, and should the need arise to increase the purchase order, not to exceed the contingency amount, should change order be necessary during the installation of the project. And do I need to read the amount? I don't think so, right?
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Council members Hossi, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem, Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. On to item 13, which is the adoption of Community Benefit Fund Program Guidelines and Application. May we have city, may we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Again, Cynthia Fortune from the Finance Department. Before you is our staff report requesting that the city council approve our Community Benefits Fund Program Guidelines and Application. This staff report supports three 2030 Vision Goals. Again, number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of receipts and expenditure disbursements. Goal number three, promote economic development through the program used for promoting small business development. And goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaborations with community groups, youth programs, and senior organizations. On June 23, 2015, the city council approved the use of $25,000 from the city's general fund reserve balance to establish a Community Benefits Fund. So tonight, before you, we will go through several items that are outlined in the program guidelines or in the staff report. We will present the purpose, program guidelines, eligibility criteria, funding categories, two-member rotating subcommittee composed of council members, and a timeline on acceptance and approval of grants by the city council. So the purpose of the Community Benefits Fund is to build relationships and partner with the community, to involve the community and respond to local issues, and to empower the community and foster community participation. Again, we wanted to provide funding for local youth programs, community events, community fee waivers, and be used as an economic development tool for small business development in the city. The program guidelines, as attached to the staff report, includes the purpose of the program, funding categories, eligibility criteria, filing dates, assessment criteria, terms and conditions, and submission of applications. These are just some of the eligibility criteria. The comprehensive list is written in the guidelines. So the grant application must be for a public purpose benefiting the city. The applicant must be located in or offer a project within the City of Gran Terrace, and the focus should be on the local community. Okay, now, this is our proposed funding categories, what we would allocate for each category in the fund. However, the council is free to agree, choose, or move the amounts as they so, as they see fit. We were proposing of that $25,000 to set aside 10 for youth programs, $5,000 for art, business, and service organizations, $5,000 for community waiver requests, and $5,000 for other categories, and economic development enhancements is an example, which totals to $25,000. As also written in the guidelines, the proposed range of grants may range from 500 up to 2,000 for a project covering 12 months. Again, it is only a proposal. Council may choose a different amount should they see fit. And we were also proposing the number of grant considerations. A single project or program will only be considered for one City of Gran Terrace grant program at a time. And we are adding to clarify that no more than one grant application will be reviewed or considered for a particular project, event, or activity. So for example, if there is a community organization that is having an event and they're requesting a grant application to be awarded, they can't submit two 2,000 grant applications for that same project. I mean, that is what we are proposing.
And may I just, just want to clarify that, too, is that, so what we're saying is that the community organization that is doing a program can do another program later on, they just can't submit two applications at the same time. So if they did one in April, they can do one in August. They just can't submit two applications at the same time.
So we added some examples of some grant projects. Again, these are just samples, and they're not limited to what we've written up there. So for youth programs, it would be the waiver of part fees. For art, business, and service organizations, it could be the hiring of temporary personnel to provide operational support. For community waiver requests, it could be the wave of other city fees for any community events. And for other, which, you know, again, could be economic development enhancements, could be the waiver of filing fees or occupancy fees. So we also thought to highlight some of the examples of what will not be considered: funding for fundraising activities, for permanent staff costs, projects that duplicate existing organization services or programs, projects with a sole political or religious purpose, commercial activities in organizations. Again, we were proposing a two-member subcommittee consisting of city council members, and we request it, we recommend that it be rotating, and the members are to be rotated every quarter, and that the subcommittee submits the recommended applications to city council for approval. We also are submitting a proposed timeline for the submission and approval of grant applications. We will request that applications be due at the first of each month, provide the subcommittee several days to review the applications by the 10th of the month, and have the grant awards scheduled towards the second city council meeting of each month. That concludes our report, and myself and the city manager will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Fortune. Are there any questions of staff?
I don't have any questions, but I have some comments.
Mayor Protem?
I'm going to say, I failed in reviewing the package to notice that the grants will range from $100 to $2,000 for a 12-month period. What I was looking for when I discussed having some given in the budget was trying to move in an area where we had substantial and meaningful programs for youth. Now, the way I look at this is, we're kind of looking more at a fund that we can have to kind of help organizations. I don't, and I think it's too small. The amounts are just too small. I think that, I'm not quite sure, I'm comfortable with a two-member rotating subcommittee. I was kind of looking that staff would have this on a competitive basis and bring it to us. But depending on what the others feel, I just probably don't want to do little tiny amounts. But I'm happy to proceed whatever categories the remainder of the council wants to go, because we have to start somewhere. And as we maybe get to our mid-year and we know more where we are financially, we can enhance these areas. But my message to staff is that I really want to move in a substantial way of doing something for the youth, and to have it as a program.
When you say you are looking for a program, you're saying you want city staff providing something, is that, I'm just trying to understand.
No, it doesn't have to be city staff, but it could be working in a partner with an existing organization, allowing them to provide something here by providing some grant support.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Council member Wilson?
I'd like to direct the question to city manager. Would this be the proper place to instigate a community benefit for partnering with business?
Yes, it is an opportunity to partner with businesses. That's why we had the number of categories that we listed. That's why we had the number of categories that we listed. You know, one of the things, I think as Mayor Protem mentioned earlier, or and the mayor, is that this was sort of a start of a program for this fiscal year. We'll be coming back to the council at the first quarter, which would be first of October, with the final closeout of the budget from 2014-15. And I can say that there will be some additional resources available, and I'll be bringing that forward to the council, and the council can then, if they want to add or enhance various types of programs, they can either put that in the fund balance or appropriate that for, in this fiscal year. So what we tried to do was to have a broad category to bring to you as a menu for the council to actually make the determination.
To Councilmember Wilson's question, on the examples of what will not be considered, we have commercial activities and organizations. So to me, if we're not considering commercial organizations, does that mean we are not looking at partnering with businesses?
Well, what we're doing is, the goal would be, we would be partnering with businesses that meet the criteria listed in the grant. For example, if they were doing a youth internship program, if they were doing an incubator program, teaching youth or trying to, you know, do programs that benefited the citizens of Grand Terrace that were in, that were not, were teaching and training versus selling a product.
Councilmember Mitchell.
I kind of feel like our vision isn't clear here. I feel like there's some blurred lines. When I think about business organizations and youth organizations or civic and service group organizations, I think they're all different entities. I think originally, when we had a conversation around this, we were looking at youth and some of the other organizations within the community that we could help make successful with providing a few extra dollars here and there to help offset their budget. But now I almost feel like some of this is being used for some economic growth. I think there's opportunity to do that as well. I just would like to see there be two different efforts made. I also think that maybe we don't list out the criteria that would not be considered because I think, like the Veterans Wall, that they are raising funds, and I would have actually considered maybe helping provide some funds to offset the cost of them putting on the annual walk. I guess that would be more like the foundation. Yeah, I was going to say the foundation, the Lions Club. I may be confusing those all, but I know exactly who they are and what they do. I just, for lack of better words, I didn't describe that appropriately when I first started. But anyways, when it comes to fundraising, some of the organizations do raise funds, so I want to make sure there, it isn't, there's enough written without it being too black and white where we can't have some flexibility in what we're offering. And I trust our staff. I think we have very capable staff. I think this would be something that I would see you all manage and then bring it before council, the applications that qualify, for us to move forward with the action. And then, I don't know, I think that the small amounts of $100 or $200 just seems like busy work to me. I think that the more meaningful grant amounts would behoove our organizations and then not allow us to do repetitious little busy duties. Those are my five cents on it, but I'm willing to be flexible and do what we all agree as a council.
Madam Mayor, if I may, some of the criteria was created in order to, and some of the factors put in there, and I put some of them in there. My concern was getting into an area of gift to public funds, and so it may seem a little restrictive, but some of the criteria is to help us not cross that line.
Would there be a possibility of us creating our own? Maybe we look at using volunteers to manage some community projects, and we use the $25,000 to fund that? I don't know, maybe we're getting way off course here, but I don't know, maybe I thought as well.
You know, I had Ms. Fortune put up the, sort of, the categories there. So it's within the council's purview to say if the council wanted to adopt the program and move the money into certain categories, and that you can come back and, for example, if you didn't want to do anything economic development right now, you could move money into the, either the youth or the arts program or community waiver request. We talked about the Veterans Wall. You know, for example, they meet certain criteria based on what's there. Either fee waivers or other contributions that we, it's actually art, it's, there's multiple places. And so we were very cognizant of saying, and that's why Ms. Fortune clearly identified the fact that we put a menu before you, and really the policymakers need to make that decision. So we said 500 to $2,000. If the council decides that you want to do no more than $10,000 or no more than $20,000, that doesn't preclude anyone from presenting an application for $250. For example, friends at the library, they do a great program every year for their, for the summertime. Their total amount for all of those programs is around $2,000. So, and it's like $120 per event. So little amounts do matter, but certainly you can have a large amount, it doesn't preclude anybody from submitting a small application.
Councilmember Wilson.
Madam Mayor, I really understand what the City Manager's after here. This is a placeholder, is what this is, an experiment. And we haven't been able to do this kind of thing because we haven't really been in the position. So if we're starting out small, I don't think that's a problem. I really applaud his ability to find funding sources and then create the mechanism around it. So I wouldn't be opposed at this juncture. Obviously, I'm very, very pro-economic development, but the fact that it's mixed into the situation for right now doesn't bother me. I think we can create the infrastructure around it if we have the funding, and if we have to separate things and not mix money, that's fine.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a possibility of us maybe allocating $10,000 at this time to make a couple of the different subgroups within here, and then taking the other 15 and apply it towards something that we all want to grow towards, which is economic development? There are no blurred lines?
It's really your ability to make a motion and your colleagues to support it, and we're on board.
I think I'd like a little further discussion before we do that.
Mayor Protem.
I know we need to start somewhere, having a formal place for maybe community waiver requests, but we just did some waivers today. Okay, so we did waivers of $1,735 for the Run, Walk, Freedom, and Healthy GT Fair. So is that not the wall?
It will be.
Yeah.
But that walk, this year the funds are going towards the wall. In future years, if they come back and ask for a fee waiver, they very well could be raising funds for something else.
Well, yeah, but I mean, this is for this.
But for this year, yes.
This is for this year. That's why I say, so, kind of like to see some balance of, that would kind of address some waivers this year already. Maybe we might want to, you know, to be more comfortable how much waivers. I mean, obviously, I'm not including anything about any special events or anything because the Lions are providing services that we should be doing. And they're raising money for services that we should have been doing, and we weren't doing them. So, but there's some others that, you know, we are supporting them because we're doing fee waivers that, you know. So I'm happy to leave things as they are, but to expand the amounts. And then that way, we're starting somewhere where we all feel that there should be some areas addressed, economic development and all these other things. So.
Expand the amount that can be requested?
Yeah.
Up to the caps that are on this table here?
Uh huh.
Okay. What are other thoughts on that?
I understand what Mayor Protem's saying, you know, because are we almost at the limit? If we did this $5,000 on a fee waiver, because I know we have a lot of fee waivers, are we almost at that limit right now? I mean, once we get to that limit, are we going to not use, are we going to tap into other parts of the program?
Mr. City Manager, the fee waivers that we've done so far this year, will they be recognized as part of this $25,000?
They were not, they were not anticipated to be a part of this, that $5,000.
Okay, so next year, it's going to be 5,000. So once we hit that 5,000 mark, we're not going to be waiving any more fees, is that?
No, sir, here's the thing, is that the fee waiver request within the limitations of the Community Benefits Fund are just the Community Benefits Fund. The council, if they decide to waive fees, and they can tell staff, take it out of the Community Benefits Fund if there's an application, or I can direct it to the council, and the council can do a fee waiver, and it'll come out of the General Fund. So for example, a group that wanted to submit an application, would submit an application to the Community Benefits Fund, or they can submit a request to staff, and staff can move it forward separately. This doesn't limit your ability to waive fees. This limits your amount based on the Community Benefits Fund, but what you can fund out of that category if it's presented to you. So it's sort of, unless I get direction from the council that, don't bring any fee waivers unless they come through the Community Benefits Fund.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Wilson.
So if I understand correctly, these, because it's a first-time program, these are waste bans, and they're placeholders. So.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Mitchell.
I'll motion to go with staff's recommendation and go within this. I think this is a starting point for us to get moving on, and we can always tweak it up as we go along if we see that there's a need for adjustment.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and.
Is that with the higher amount, or you're stopping at the $2,000?
There's a couple things on the table still.
Well, I think that.
Okay, what was the motion again? Please restate your motion.
To approve, I'm going to look at here now, to approve the resolution. And before I do that, I want to recognize what Protem Mayor said.
But you can, no, you can make that motion, we can have a second. We're going to have discussion before we vote.
Approve the resolution approving the Community Benefits Program Guidelines and Application.
Okay.
Do I need to read all five of them, Richard?
No, and you were doing it based on what was in recommendation, so we have a motion and a second, and Mayor Protem, you have further discussion.
Yeah, because I discussed again about, and I think Councilmember Mitchell had also talked about trusting staff with this. I'm really not comfortable having a subcommittee of the council members rotating on this. I want to keep it as apolitical as possible. And two is raising the limits of, I don't want to do, like you said, the busy work of, you know, a couple hundred dollars, a thousand dollars. I think since we, I would like to go to staff, and you know, let's do it with, you know, a two-time-year thing, and then that way we can have more substantial grants.
I understand what you're saying about, both you and Councilmember Mitchell saying about the lower amount, but if somebody wanted to apply for $250, I wouldn't discourage that. I do echo your sentiments about the rotating of the council members. As I was sitting here, I was trying to think of how we were going to keep track of whose turn it was, and if something hit at one time, but it carried over for some reason to another term, that might get complicated. And I believe that staff could do a fine job of reading these applications. So any other comments on this?
Mayor and Protem Mayor, gosh, page 125, I think the recommendation is 500 to 2,000. I just want to confirm that Protem Mayor is comfortable with the 500 range. Yeah, 125.
I would like to say, can we just sit the upper limit and not have to have a lower limit?
I'm comfortable with that as well. So up to $2,000? Based on staff's previous experience and expertise, does that sound like a reasonable request, Richard?
The, I'm fine with the number that you're discussing. We just put the $2,000 number in there. If you think it should be a higher number, we're okay with it, and we're fine. And certainly, the City Manager's office can administer and bring those items to the council.
I think $2,000 is a significant amount of money that can make a difference to some groups, and I think to spread the wealth would benefit our community.
Well, I think we need to remember, we don't have any city-provided youth services. So what are you going to do with $2,000?
If I remember correctly, I think some of the homework clubs and that sort that the rec center runs is funded on less than $2,000.
Well, I would just say that I'm trying to get some youth services in this community. And so, why don't we do this? Go ahead and leave it as it is, and then we can, when we do this first half-year, come back and revisit this and see what kinds of things we can do. But I thought at one point there was perhaps a potential during the summer to bring Boys and Girls Club in here, and that wasn't going to be $2,000 to do something. So, you know, if we come back at six months and look at it, and we have some more money, why don't we go ahead and revisit it at that point?
Okay, so do we need to restate our motion based on the discussion that we had?
I will amend my motion to include that we go with the cap of up to $2,000 with no minimum specified, and that we revisit this in six months to see how the current application is working.
And are we going to take out the rotating?
And rotating.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee comprised of council members and delegate that task to staff, to bring it back to council for approval.
So Mayor, if I can restate to make sure that I understand, you are approving the resolution to establish the guidelines and the application. We are not approving number two and three because we are not going to establish a subcommittee. We are going to not have a minimum, and a maximum of up to each proposed budget.
No, 2,000.
I believe it was the 2,000.
Still to 2,000. So no minimum, up to 2,000. The proposed budget by category still stands?
Yes.
And we are going to authorize the City Manager to implement the Community Benefits Fund program.
Right, and then we will be revisiting in six months.
Six months, and we'll be revisiting in six months.
Before, there's a second. I think that there's one other point here that we probably didn't discuss, is approve the transmission of grant applications each month. I think that, I thought I heard someone say less often. I just want to make sure that we've had that discussion and everyone's comfortable before we agree on that. So, four.
I think there was a suggestion that it maybe happened two times a year.
I, I'm not sure that we could go with that.
Mr. City Manager?
I just want to make sure that at least it's flexible enough in case someone, you have a program, a great new program coming up, and I'd say, well, we'll only do it twice a year, that might be some of the problems. So it can submit, anyone can submit. If they can submit, you know, anytime, that would be great. Since staff's going to be handling it, we can funnel those through the system.
Okay, now it's comfortable. So you're comfortable? Okay, all right, and then four.
And I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, I know, I shouldn't have done that.
May I just say one more thing, that can you just maybe have it no later than six months? Because I think I'll be back to the council at the first quarter.
Okay, that's fine. No later than six months. All right, so we have an amended motion.
Second, Kers.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem, Ronless voted aye. Mayor McNabb voted aye.
Okay, thank you, staff, and thank you, council, for your discussion. I believe we have one last item. Ah, yes. Item H.
Yes.
City Manager Communications. Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to also remind the council and let the citizens know.
that last week, the Los Angeles World Airport turned, turned over the authority of the management of the airport back to the City of Ontario for local or home rule. In addition to that, Mayor McNabb and I met with Assemblywoman Brown regarding AB 113, and she did mention that. One of the things that's happening regarding AB 113 is it really is a trailer budget bill that the governor didn't carry forward when he approved his May revision, but there are a number of things that are in that bill that some people are against it and some people are, are supporting it. One of the things that we need to do is, we need to send a letter of support recommending the amendments to the bill and that we would support that, because we really want to have access to our $16 million in bond proceeds that we're, and for the public, that we're already paying the debt service for. We just have the money sitting, and to let you know what that looks like, there's 750-some-odd million dollars in bond proceeds that governments throughout the city of California issued bonds for redevelopment, that the State Department of Finance has not allowed the communities to access. So, and that can equate to really $750 million being pumped into communities, creating jobs and development. So, it's extremely important that cities that have a stake in it send something to our legislature, and what's beneficial for us is that Assemblymember Brown is actually on that Budget Committee, working on our behalf, and has the ear of the Speaker as it moves the organization forward, so I will be bringing that letter to the, to the council as soon as possible.
All right, thank you very much. That will conclude our agenda. Our next regular City Council meeting will be held Tuesday, August 25th, 2015, 6:00 PM, right here. Again, thank you to my colleagues for your discussion tonight, and thank you to the staff. Thank you for those of you who came out to be here with us tonight. Agenda item requests will be submitted in writing to the City Clerk's Office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. We are adjourned. [inaudible] It's not a bad thing, it's really not a bad thing.
[inaudible]
for paying out their fees and fines and stuff, are they primary just during the weekdays?
Yes, sir, they are.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, the staff? Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a few questions. First of all, I want to recognize that I, I think there is a need for some additional staff, we have lots of work that needs to be done, that we just don't have enough hands to get the work done. My initial fear was that we were gonna create some inequity in the positions, because the hourly rate of pay seems fairly high, but I was assured that it's not gonna happen. So that problem, that, that issue with me is, is pretty much resolved. But I do have an additional question when it comes to the maintenance position, it was my initial understanding that it, the new position would be a supervisory position, like a crew lead, since we already have a crew lead, how's that dynamics gonna work?
The way that dynamic would work is that our full-time maintenance crew leader person would be the, the lead, and would be directing the, and managing and scheduling the resources accordingly, however, with this 18-hour, because remember, these are only 18-hour positions, and so we do want our full-time crew lead to ultimately be the lead as far as how those resources are gonna be directed, but that level of a maintenance crew lead, with the experience that person has, they, they're able to do a few things. One is provide some mentoring for our existing, our full-time crew lead, and also has the, the knowledge and the experience to address issues as they come up in the field, so that person can better assist our full-time staff in responding to issues that may come up. There, the, the person that we envision, that we would like to talk to about this has been a past employee, and so there is a better, there is a relationship there, and that person understands that there's a full-time crew lead and that's the lead. I, I don't envision a, a problem.
Okay. Are we identifying this position as a lead? I guess if that person doesn't pan out, I just don't want to set us up for a situation.
Right, so what we would do is, we would recruit for a person of that, of that experience level. Again, this is 18 hours, and so the, the focus of this work is to work in our streets, so, you know, pothole repair, replacing streets, signs that are worn or need to be replaced, so, I, I don't think that's gonna be that much of an issue if that person doesn't pan out.
Okay, and then I have a couple other questions, Sandra, and maybe even to our City Manager.
Sure, absolutely.
We pretty much run from Monday through Thursday, with this new position and our need for code enforcement on the weekend, Fridays and weekends, is there a possibility that we can create some sort of rotating shift, so we do have some maintenance people on Friday to, and possibly Saturdays?
Yeah.
Maybe once a month that we can create a, and of course, we don't want to pre-share what those days are to our community, because we'll still create the same situation that we have now, but where we can have some, some city staff available and working?
Sure, you know, one of the things that we need to look at is when we need to provide services to the residents, for example, our parks, we're closed Monday through, we're closed on, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Well, our parks are actually heavily used on Fridays, especially Saturday, and so, you know, what other organizations do is they have a modified schedule, they even bring in someone for, on, on the Saturday to ensure that, that if Thursday evening, the park's been used Thursday, Friday, was guaranteed that you might have the highest use for the park system and the services need to be there. So certainly, we'll be looking at that activity, but we have...
That's exactly why I asked the question.
We have one or two people that, we have one person that's on call over the course of, of, over the weekend. Now, obviously, we can activate that person along with the additional 18-hour person to, to make sure that those parks are ready and available and clean to go over the weekend. In addition to that, you're absolutely right, our code enforcement component, if, you know, citizen understands our operational hours, the activity of the weekend is a time that we have the least amount of code enforcement available, and so we definitely need to be flexible in terms of doing that. But one of the discussions that we're gonna be having with the council is looking at our overall codes that we have, and looking at, you know, what are our priorities? There are, you know, 50 major codes that we have that need to be addressed, but there are some areas where we can be proactive versus reactive on, and so being able to look at our code enforcement officer and modifying the time, having him or her in the appropriate place to address the issues when the highest activity or potential code enforcement violations are, are actually occurring, like yard sales on the weekends, or cars being sold on the streets on the weekend, things of that particular nature, on the days that we're currently not, we don't have the service in place. So definitely looking at when we need to apply the, the resources is one of the things I'm talking to Sandra about in the department.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions? Councilmember Hussey?
This is for Mr. Duffy, so you said we have one person on call every weekend, is that the same person, or they rotate that, or?
We, we try to rotate that, but she has the list that she, she developed, yes.
Okay, and like Councilmember Mitchell said, I understand what she's saying, we're gonna give this part-time a title as lead, is that what the title's gonna be?
Yes, that is a maintenance crew lead. I...
So the, the maintenance crew lead means this, a lead maintenance worker has the ability to supervise others on, on site. It's not the superintendent or the supervisor, it's, it means if you go to a work site, they're able to say, okay, there's a one and a two, we can do this. The primary purpose of this is being able to take the crews and split them in half. So if we have five work release employees and we have a maintenance worker, one, two, and the lead, if we have two public works projects that we need to do two separate areas, this one person can now act as the lead in that particular area. It also allows us to, because we're trying to be proactive, the, having the lead person that, or someone with more experience will allow us, that person be able to work with contractors, be able to help and be consistent with ordering new signs, make sure the specs occur, and being able to work independently with, with the Community Development Director versus having just another person as a part, as a part of the crew. So it's being flexible.
So this part-time maintenance person, he had prior, he worked for the city prior, was he let go because of the budget cuts?
He retired.
Retired, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
I first want to recognize before I start that we pay the staff, the residents pay the staff to do your job, and I think that you are certainly doing your job and above, and I think the questions that we have is that we can gain a better understanding, so please don't take this as we're questioning you and putting you in an awkward position. But I, I guess in my mind, it, it just seems difficult to have two people with the same title. Is there a possibility to do a maintenance crew leader one and a maintenance crew leader two, or maybe a, a whatever, so that they don't have the exact same title, so there is some sort of, I guess, organizational order? I see what you're trying to achieve, Sandra, but in my mind, I don't want the, the staff under them to be conflicted with who's their supervisor, who's not their supervisor, where do they take direction, where do they not take direction? I, I'm sure we don't have an environment like that now, but who says in days to come that we might not?
Director Molye?
I suppose that's something we could look at, but keep in mind, Grand Terrace, we're in a unique situation. Other cities have, you know, maintenance for parks, and those, those employees assigned to parks, parks, maintenance have crew leads, and then you have street maintenance, and they have a crew lead, and you have storm drain repair, and they have a crew, you have facility maintenance, and they, they have a crew lead, and so it's not unusual to have various aspects of maintenance with various crew leads to, to, to lead a crew. We're unique in that we have one crew and they, they're responsible for everything, you know, street maintenance, park maintenance, facility maintenance, so the, the concept itself is not, it's not uncommon.
Sure.
We just, you know, happen to have a, a unique situation where we have a small staff, and so this is not that much different than having a, a crew lead that would take a lead, the 18-hours are here, on, on street maintenance, while the other crew lead will do the broader overseen of the, of the department and take the lead with park maintenance and fill facility maintenance, and at least they know that they have, they have a capable coworker that can take a lead, take a crew and lead that crew.
And maybe that's, that, it's as simple as that, Sandra, that we're clearly defining it in the job description.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager?
And, and it's a point well taken, and in a larger organization, I can see where that can certainly be an issue. You know, one of the things that we're trying to capture is the experience, and the title goes along with the experience, however, I think what we can do, we can come back to the council with either a classification that's slightly adjusted that says part-time maintenance lead, or even adjust the title accordingly, so there isn't that confusion, because you're, it's a point well taken, it's two titles in one location, who do I, if I'm, if I'm an employee that wants to take advantage of the situation, I can certainly do it under that scenario, so that's a point well taken.
Very well, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Wilson?
Might I suggest, you know, it's really under the purview of the City Manager to handle these kinds of items, I think we should just rely on them.
Thank you. All right, is there any member who, of the public that wishes to speak at this point? I have no request to speak forums, I see nobody taking advantage of coming forward, so I will close public comment, and I will come back to council for a motion, please.
I move adoptions of recommendation one, two, and three, approve two additional part-time 18-hour week positions in Community Development Department, one maintenance crew lead and one office specialist, two part-time positions, approve the revised gas tax account, line item budgets detailed in Table 2 of the report, and approve labor reallocation of positions detailed in Table 3 of the report.
I will second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes, councilmember Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye, Mayor Protem Rollis voted aye, Mayor McNabb voted aye.
Thank you, our last item, H, is the City Manager Communication, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, just wanted to, some of the council members mentioned earlier, I wanted to actually thank the Community Development Department and the EOC Committee for bearing with us as we were able to make some improvements in bringing back AM 1640, it's currently on the air. In addition to that, based on last year's budget, we are, we ordered some new equipment that will make the station even better and stronger in its output. In addition to the other component that we were shooting for was the, the ham radio operations, we did one of our checks yesterday, and that has occurred, that we're, we're in compliance and we're on board. In addition to that, I also wanted to talk about, once again, I wanted to appreciate, have the staff appreciate the staff's efforts in terms of putting that together. The League of California Cities Meeting is, is coming up, and as someone mentioned earlier, in, in the September, early October, I think it's gonna be very important for the City of Grand Terrace and its delegates to be there, to be able to, to share and network with the other cities throughout, throughout the state. And the mayor and I actually met with the Sandbag Executive Director, Raymond Wolf, he came out to talk with us about Grand Terrace and the Barton Road interchange expansion. And just so we understand the magnitude of that project, that project is going to be anywhere from eight, 80 million to 100 million dollars in, in construction development. And as we move forward in terms of economic development, having that interchange in that new improved condition is part of, also part of the gateway to the city, is gonna be vital to our economic development success. The other thing is that I have requested, and I believe that we're gonna be moving forward with a successor agency meeting on the 21st of, of July, which is next week, and we'll be talking about the Longways Property Management Plan, and that's it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Our next regular City Council meeting will be held Tuesday, July 28th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. The agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the City Clerk's Office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. With that, I'd like to thank my colleagues and those members of the public that came and expressed their opinions tonight, and thank you, the staff. We are adjourned.